You don't mind, we'll get started. All right. Good evening and welcome to Sleda Independent School District Video Conference Main of the Board of Trustees. This is our last meeting for this year, we hope, and it's been a year that we'll never forget for a long, long time. So, we invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Citizens' input electronic sign up shows the rules for participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on the issue raised. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:00 PM. We have a call with Mr. Charlie Bustillos, Mr. Sotero Ramirez, Mr. Shane Hagerty, Mr. Mike Rosales, Ms. Connie Woodruff, Ms. Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Secretary Lucero, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please join me for a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sotero. So, Ms. Catherine, do we have any citizens' input today?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Dr. Delatorre, do you have any presentations for us this evening?
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board. We do. We have our standing COVID-19 presentation. If I can get someone to bring that up, we'll go through that, and then we are available to answer any questions. Okay. The presentation that I'm about to give will cover the local COVID-19 conditions or an update on what's happening in the region. I'll share a regional plan with you and how we developed it, or at least reintroduce that. A timeline, an update on rapid testing and what we anticipate relative to the vaccines that are being made available across the country. The safety protocols that remain in place at all of our schools and district offices and departments around the area, and then where we are relative to our technology upgrades. This is today's numbers. You may have already seen them. Twenty-three point seven three, that's actually a slight increase from yesterday. We've seen a number of days with very modest decreases, but it climbed, I believe, by point zero four today. We have been in the red zone for the last fourteen days, or for every day that we've been tracking hospitalization rate. Again, this, this plan was developed by Region Nineteen Superintendents, elected officials that we reached out to, and it was approved by the Texas Education Agency. It really just relies on one very important indicator, that's the hospitalization rate here in the El Paso region, and it offers four levels of restriction relative to on-campus instruction, face-to-face personal instruction. The red zone to the far left is where we are at present and have been for the last fourteen days, and that's a hospitalization rate in excess of twenty percent. During a red zone situation, our school systems can restrict access to on-campus instruction for all grade levels. However, on-campus instruction must still be provided for those priority populations whose parents feel comfortable sending them to school. And so, we've got, I believe, approximately two thousand students who go to school every day across the district, under the red zone, and who likely meet the priority status. In order to move to the orange zone, we would have to drop down below twenty percent. What that would allow us to do is provide daily on-campus instruction to all elementary students who wish to attend. But we may also make face-to-face instruction available to middle school and high school students who wish to attend in a face-to-face, in-person environment. And again, we have to make our schools available to those students who fall under the priority student category. It moves to the right, to ten percent, to fourteen point nine percent. All that does, that is different than the orange zone, is it allows for, or requires that, we also allow middle school and high school students. And then finally, the green zone would ask us to go ahead and make our schools available to all students regardless of grade level configuration and whether or not they are priority populations. But again, that would depend on those parents and families who feel comfortable sending students to school. The agreement across the region was that once we got to the orange zone, and I'll talk a little bit about that, that we would, as a sign of, I guess, uniformity, ask all of our teachers to return and teach from the classroom. Now, to get to the orange zone, not only do we have to fall below twenty percent, we have to fall below twenty percent and remain at below twenty percent for seven days in a row. Once we've accomplished that, then we can begin the process of reintroducing our faculty and staff to our schools. However, if just one day goes back up over the twenty percent, we start over and are required to go ahead and demonstrate the seven days of percentages below twenty percent before we can ask, before we can move to the orange zone. So, all it takes is one day, and we move to the left. It takes seven days, seven successive days, to move to the right. On November ninth, we opened our learning hubs at all of our schools, again, for those special or priority populations. In our case, we have made that experience available to any and all students whose parents and family want to send them to school and have access to a face-to-face in-person experience. Should we achieve a seven-day-in-a-row hospitalization rate of less than twenty percent, we'd like the board to consider having an in-person board workshop as a way to model for the rest of the district that not only do we expect them to return, if the numbers, the statistics support it, but that the board and district leadership is also prepared to follow the same guidelines. From Wednesday, January sixth, after we get back from the holiday, we will monitor to see whether or not we have experienced seven days of hospitalization rates below twenty percent. And at that point, we would make the board aware of our plan to bring back teachers to their classroom. And then finally, campuses who opt for face-to-face instruction or offer face-to-face instruction will be made available for all students on January eleventh across the district. An update on our rapid testing that I believe has been the cornerstone in successfully completing our fall sports program and offering the hubs district-wide is based on the fact that, again, we were asked to pioneer, to pilot, the Abbott Rapid Test. Tests were reserved for on-campus students and staff. High school athletes continued to undergo weekly testing. We're right at the cusp of starting our winter sports season. The only exception is Parkland has made it to the area playoffs and will be traveling to the Midland, Odessa area tomorrow night. They either have been tested today or will be tested tomorrow. And Del Valle High School has made it to the area playoffs, and they will be in Big Spring. And that same system, that same routine that we've relied on all fall will continue this week to make sure that they are all COVID-free when they travel to compete. Middle and elementary schools begin offering testing at the campuses and for students whose parents give us permission. We expect vaccines to be available as soon as February. It looks like some of the letters and petitions that we have sent as superintendents from the Texas Urban Council and other administrator, educator agencies, associations have also sent letters asking that, once the healthcare professionals and the elderly have access, that educators across Texas be the next group to receive the vaccines because we have such an enormous impact on our community, given that these people work with, in our case, forty thousand students or forty thousand families that have, in some cases, had to endure quite a burden, a hardship when balancing, educating their children with work commitments and responsibilities. And we anticipate that our partnership with the city and with other local health officials will continue, and we've already identified the comprehensive care clinic as a likely site. There may be others, but at the very least, the comprehensive care clinic adjacent to Riverside High School is an obvious and natural venue to make the vaccine available. And we will continue to work with our legislative delegation, TUC, and the Texas Association of School Administrators to consider teachers as frontline workers, once they're back in a classroom and in front of children, and to make sure that they are prioritized when it comes to the vaccines.
Dr. Delatorre?
Yes, sir.
Would there be any value if the board did a, wrote a letter in support of that and sent it off to our delegation and also to the governor as well?
I think that's a great idea, and I think the more that we impress upon them that it's important that if we're going to have faculty and staff in and around children who live in homes where we have no control of the environment, that they should certainly rise to the head of the line or as close as possible. So, I think that's a great idea. We'd be happy to facilitate that.
That President Ochoa and the other, other members of the board agree with that as well, too. And I hope I would understand everybody agree on that, so.
Good. We'll work with you to get that done as soon as possible. This is just for your information, we've, Raul has done just an amazing job. This is what the numbers look like relative to the number of people that have been tested and their respective positivity rate based on grade level configuration, location where they work, and it covers the last two months, November and December. So, you can see that as far as our operated operations, high schools, point nine, middle schools, right at one, elementary schools, point six, central office, two, unidentified sites, in other words, employees who work in and around the district rather than are stationary. Anyway, you can see the numbers there, and you can see that we have tested almost nine thousand students and staff since we received the Abbott Laboratories antigen test. And this district plan is available on the website for public reference. We have had a number of meetings where I've had the opportunity to remind the audience, in many cases, teachers, employees, the students, superintendent's advisory committee, that the update relative to our, our plan is available and updated every day on the website. We have, as you know, provided a face mask for every student and employee. We have also provided face shields. Unless a medical accommodation has been granted at this time, all students and staff are required to wear their masks when they are on district property. Rapid testing and daily screening can continue. We have the inventory. The desk dividers are on all the desks across the district. Classrooms have been rearranged to assure social distance. Hand sanitizer is readily available in every classroom and in common areas. And finally, even though there aren't many students or staff on our campuses, the campuses are cleaned every day as if we were back in a face-to-face personal environment in anticipation and preparation that, that will likely happen at some point in the near future. The technology pieces that IDB purchased that we shared with you about a month and a half ago, two months ago, where we have, in an effort to support our teachers, purchased millions of dollars of IDBs for all of the core subject teachers. The boards are intended to try and support teachers who may be asked to not just work with the three or four students that are sitting in front of them, but more importantly, so that the students that have opted to remain at home and learn online can experience what's happening in the classroom, and it doesn't create too much of an additional burden for our teachers. They come with a microphone, earbuds, a USB hub, an ITS that helps pick up comments coming from students and staff in the classroom, as well as comments coming from students who are online. And we are, we are prepared and ready to go. We have been promoting our campaign to improve attendance, online attendance, and we've got winners that we go out and we give prizes to. I'll be going out tomorrow to give three families and their respective student their prize for being on time, online, and on point with a perfect attendance record. They go into a lottery, and then we select the winners. Chico, the Chihuahua, joins me for that presentation. It went really well, and then we make that available as a video on a number of social media sites. And at this time, all of us here are at your disposal to answer any questions, anything that's come up relative to the virus. So, please.
Ms. Woodruff?
Sorry about that. I had done mute. Yeah, you know, being a teacher, I've kind of experienced this whole process firsthand. So, I'm thinking about your, your seven-day, you know, your in and out, coming in and going out again. Is there any way we can help prepare the teachers? Because I know for me, so you know, you're trying to establish these routines to keep your classroom going, even online, you have these routines. And so, then you pop in for a day and say that then they have to go back out a day. Is there any way we can help prepare the teachers so that they can move in and out of these scenarios without too much stress and all the things that go along with that?
I think the easy answer is that when we move, for illustrative purposes, into the the orange, let's say we have seven days, and then all of a sudden, we get a day where the numbers would indicate that we're back into the red. I don't know that we're going to necessarily allow the teachers to go back home. I think what we're going to do is accept that now some students who would normally not be there can, if they wish, go back home because we've gone into a red zone. Our idea is that what you just described, and I think would be incredibly disruptive.
Right, it is, exactly, yeah.
And I think it would be better if, working with the teachers and the various associations, if we agreed that, even though we may move into the red zone because we have a day, we wouldn't necessarily encourage you to not show up for work the next day. What we'd simply do is, we would be aware of the fact that you may have parents who feel uncomfortable sending their students and might pull them until the numbers fall. But that's something we're going to have to discuss with, with the Teachers Association, but I guess the best way to put it is, once we get our teachers in the classroom, our, our hope is, and our plan is, that they will recognize that they're in a very safe environment and may not feel that interrupting or disrupting their instructional plan, their lesson plan, would be in their best interest as well as the students' best interests if they hang in there. And then if it goes, you know, four, five, six, seven days, then we may have to suspend the requirement that they remain on campus. I don't know, Lindy, or is that?
Yeah, that makes good sense to me because I can tell you that I think it'll be easier for them to be able to stay on campus and keep going, kind of like they were going, whether, instead of, because I moved all my stuff back home whenever, when I was teaching from home, it was all moved home, and then I go back to school and I have to move it all back to school. And so, I think it would be, I personally feel like that's a good idea, to give them the chance to just stay at the school and teach from there. Because if you're having to move things back and forth all the time, especially in the small, younger grades that need all your visuals and all of your, you know, all the things that you're using, that's going to be very, very frustrating for everyone, so. I have one more little thing that I just wanted to mention. I know that there's really nothing we can do about this except for maybe have the teachers discuss with, especially the littler kids. You know, when hand sanitizer is so readily available for, for little kids in particular, they have a tendency to overuse that stuff. I actually had a child in my classroom who developed a pretty good little rash on his hands, and the doctor seemed to think that that was because of overuse of hand sanitizer. Of course, the parents are sending it in bags, and they're sending it in all sorts of places. So, I don't know if there's really anything, but just to say, maybe we should have our teachers just to, you know, caution them to don't overuse the hand sanitizer. It's a temptation, especially for little kids, to play in the soap and play in all of these things, you know? And so, I think it might be a good precaution. Otherwise, we may have some skin reactions that are, you know, maybe not everyone, but it's not, to me, it's not a bad idea to, to put that out there, so.
No, you make a great point to, to regulate that to some extent.
Right, thank you.
Lindy, did you have something you wanted to add?
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear her.
Lindy, we can't hear you.
Let her work on that, and she can come back. I think Catherine had a comment or a question.
I wanted to know, will we be doing another, I got a couple of questions, so let me just get them out real quick. Will we be doing another survey before returning to school to determine how many students will in fact be considering the return back? And I really want to drive home a point for our teachers to understand, I want to understand it. So, are we saying that the week of January sixth, or the first Friday, if over the, the break, the hospital, hospitalization rate is under twenty percent for the seven consecutive days, then that's when they're expected to return, and that'll pretty much be the day they stay on campus for the rest of the year?
Yes, ma'am. If there, if there has in fact been seven days, successive days of hospitalization rate below twenty percent.
Okay, and we had discussed, I think, over the phone a while back about rapid testing once a week, is that something that is going to be in the plan for teachers and students that do return to school, or how will that look?
Yes, ma'am. The, the plan is that for those teachers who are willing to take the rapid test, the rapid test will be made available to them and to those students whose parents have agreed to allow us to test their children once a week.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'm sorry, I was going to answer Ms. Lucero's question regarding,
Oh, okay.
Regarding the survey, good afternoon, good evening now, President Ochoa, Board of Trustees. The survey is going, we're not going to necessarily give another survey, what we're going, we have the data, we had a ninety-nine percent completion rate on our last October survey. And what we've seen from our survey in July and in October, that it's pretty much the same thirty percent that wants to return. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to send a personalized letter per, for a parent, and we're going to say, you know, "Dear Ms. Lucero, you've elected to continue virtually for the twenty, for the remainder of the school year. If you had a change of mind, our schools are opening on this day for face-to-face. Please contact your school so we can change your preference." And same thing on the reverse. Dear Ms. Woodruff, you've elected to return face-to-face. We're excited to have you back. Our students will resume on this day. However, if you've changed your mind, please let your school know if you would like to change your learning environment preference. That, this way, we don't hard our parents with another survey if they already answered it, and we can personalize it a little bit more to them. So, we have all that data, and that's our plan.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Bustillos?
You know, I have the same question as Ms. Lucero, and as far as the, the teachers being tested at least once a week, that, is that optional, Dr. Delatorre, if, when they come back?
Yes, sir. They, they don't need to be, I mean, we can't make it mandatory.
Okay.
It can be, just be available for them if they'd like to.
You know, as far as, you know, my daughter, she, she's a, she's an athlete, she's playing basketball, and then my wife is a, a coach, and, you know, just to get, to share, you know, they get tested every Monday, and prior to their, them competing, and it is, you know, a sense of, you know, when they test, they, you do get a sense of comfort knowing that when they come out, they test, and they test negative, you know, it gives us a good, good feeling. So, hopefully, we get our teachers a test when, when they have that opportunity and, and get that to go, and so, thank you.
One more question I had, well, that, once, and if we receive,
One more question I had. Well, the once and if we receive vaccines in February, or whatever it is that we do, what is the district considering as far as it being, is it going to be optional, mandatory? What are we looking at as an employer?
As an employer, we're making it, we're encouraging it, but it's optional. It's not mandatory.
I have a question. All the money we spent on COVID to try to prepare our classrooms and everything else, did we get any money for that from the government?
No one has seen a dime of the the CARES Act money yet. Commissioner Marath has, on a number of occasions, indicated that districts would be reimbursed. Keep in mind that when they received the money from the federal government, in some states, it was distributed to each of the respective school districts. In the state of Texas, they kept it and control it.
Right. That is correct. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. De La Torre. We have another presentation. From Ms. Shipley on the 2020 internal
Yes, sir. Champagne is just gonna give you a brief update. We we will be pulling the item on the proposed plan for 2021. And I thought that she could just give us an update on how 2020 went. I know it was an unusual year, to say the least, and so just to give her an opportunity to give the board an update on the kind of work that she's been doing and whether or not she was able to complete the 2020 plan as we get ready to consider a new 2021 plan. Champagne?
She she was having computer problems, so I will check to see if her audio is working.
Why don't we move on ahead? There she is.
Sorry about that. Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you all about how we did this year. And as Dr. De La Torre mentioned, it is a very unusual year. And we, in the internal audit, also is trying to map up to the the extraordinary work that under Supra's leadership to make sure we are all cope with the COVID. And at some point, three of my staff were all out because of the COVID, the COVID impact. And I'm grateful they are all back and all safe now, healthy and safe now, and myself, we are healthy as well. I wish everybody the same, too. So this will be a very brief overview. As you all know, I try to push our department to provide a very fair objective and added value audit services to the whole district. And we try to abide by whatever rules and the the bills passed by the federal, state, and local, especially the ball policies. And I try to abide by the communication, the process, the plans that I submit for you all. Get your approval, get your support to go by. Now, I'm very thankful of the Human Resources Department were able to help me to fill in the senior staff auditor position and the new staff auditor one. So it's looking better and better with these three months, speed up, training, and retraining. I think you're gonna see a big change even more next calendar year. So I try very much, very hard to follow audit objectives. And of course, we follow the audit point that I had presented and approved by you all. So that's the the goal and the methodology we try to follow. It's also, we trust everybody, but we have to verify everything. And the case we try to do is, we apply the same process, same rules, same requirements to every cases, considering each individual special circumstance or situations. And of course, we try to be prudent, try to be cost effective following all the legal frameworks. And we, as I say, we try all the possible ways to verify the data, supporting our assessment. And the cycle we have continued, the the one that I proposed to you all, I still prepare a lot with my staff before we go out, do the verification. When we put together the reports, we try to show you that the report is based on actual review, actual verifications. And with abide by the district policy, practices, or procedures, whatever the department announced or trained, the campus or trained, other departments, trained users, we try to make sure we understand. We do not make any recommendation that against the established practice or policies. And then we give every department or every school that we audit, six weeks to walk on their corrective action plan. And then after that, we try to do it a year or so, come back to follow up and verify the implementation of the corrective action plan. I know many people have discussed with me to see, why don't we, in crew management, meaning administrators, corrective action plan? When we issue the audit report? And, oh, why don't we go back and verify right away? I think we all need to be considerate is that we are in the school district environment. We are here to support principal to carry out their missions, but their mission first is to make sure students service, services student, their instruction, their learning. So what I try to work with other principals and directors is, within a reasonable time for them to coordinate, work with different departments, work with their own teams. That's why I have the six weeks lead time to work with all the principals. And of course, this is really not a set on stone. Sometimes the principals say, I really need more time. We work with the principal, considering the staffing, considering the T A requirement, all kinds of situation that we try to consider. And so the communication is pretty open to everybody. And I think anyone's suggestion, anything, I would take into consideration very seriously. Sometimes I, it's, I'm a little bit stern on the process, but I would assure you, our process, taking into consideration from the experience and also foreseeing what the citizen reaction would be. So sometimes people will say, oh, it's better for us to hire some external service firm to verify this or verify that. And my point is, is this cost effective? Considering what we can do in-house, we know our process, we know our people. We, if we have to train external firm, then to me, it's not cost effective in our operation. So that's just one of the examples that I give. So for, since July that I asked you all to give me a support to change the audit planning year from fiscal year to calendar year for this past six months, that I'm able to work with the new senior staff and new staff auditor for the past three to four months. And we have good progress in all the areas. My senior staff is picking, is picking up, understanding the bond process, bond constructions. And she's also working very closely with my staff auditor, too, in terms of improving the process and speeding up the 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 work. So overall, we are able to complete 80% of what we already have planned for. And there is one, one to two schools that I agree with a principal of the exit audit to postpone it to 2021 because of COVID impact. She doesn't have any staff on leave, so doesn't have any staff to help her out. So those are the situation that I have now. And I would say, if you have any question, I will answer you.
Does anybody have any questions from the champagne? I I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
All right. I noticed that in your presentations, you said stated that we had conducted some walkthroughs and some fieldwork. How much of a percentage of that was done since we started with, since April? This pandemic, that was, it's been impacted quite a bit.
Your voice become very little. Can you repeat?
How many, what, how have you conducted these walkthroughs and this fieldwork? What's a percentage of it? Because you stated there on your, on your bullets that that you have done that. How much of a percentage has this been accomplished?
Okay, for all our work, we, every audit we have done since COVID, we did not miss any process. What we did was, we do a Google Meet or Zoom meeting if we do, did not go to visit the campus. Several campuses that I visited myself, several campuses that I visit with my staff for the special circumstance, whenever there was a severe discrepancy or situation on some cash management. Rest of those, we arranged with the campus to pick up the records with the distance, of course. And for example, they prepare in the box and drop it in the trunk, we bring it back and review in the office. If there's any questions, we use Google Meet or Zoom meeting to discuss with the, with the campus and with the department. So we have not missed any of the the verification process.
And the and the corrective action plans? I know that you said it takes six weeks to prepare the corrective action plan. My question is, why is it taking so long to go back and verify? I mean, I think a year is a little excessive. I think six months might be something that we could look at. Because in a year, a lot of things changes, administration, personnel, everything else. And whatever you talk to somebody right when you did the correction action plan, they might not be there anymore. And then how does that, how does that work if it takes a whole year to go back?
We can look into that. Considering six months, what we do is, for example, if our exception deviation found was, for example, it's in the cash management part. What we do is, we look at, after, once the principal gives us a corrective action plan, we, when we go back, we sample the transactions since the corrective action plan date to see if the process has followed new process. And that's why we try not to go back too early, because when we go back too early, we don't really see the impact, the implementations.
But a year, I think it's a little too long. That's what I'm saying.
We can consider to, from 2021, January 2020, I will be able to do it quicker. As I, you all have been very supportive for this past recent two years. I am struggling and and I I'm getting good help now.
Yeah, so every time, I know we've been here, I've been here a while. And every time I hear about these correction action plans, but when I, when I see when have they been actually verified, that they are being implemented, it's kind of false. False, they're too far away for us to even know if that was the case. Had they, had they done the proper things to correct whatever you found?
Okay.
But on a, on another note, it says that this year you, you completed 80% of what you had planned. Is that correct?
Actually, it's more than 80%. I just did it roughly. This, what, what I, in the report that I presented to you, there were, there were
No, you just, you just right now stated that you did 80%.
Yes, yes. So the 20% of them, it's about five, one, two, three, four, five, six schools that are my staff, it's, it's still getting the records and trying to wrap it up the process.
My question is, 20%, how is it gonna impact your 2021 plan?
We should be able to use the January time to make up to all these differences.
And I know it's been, it's been hard to do these things, especially when you can't go on site and do all these things. I'm just trying to grasp, you know, I just, I'm gonna say, I'm just cautioning you to be aware that we all have these great plans, but things will come into, get into the way of completing your schedules. So when you're preparing 2021, keep that in mind, that, you know, don't buy too much more than you can chew, I guess.
Yes, sir. And I think this, this is a very, I appreciate this. And I'm looking at the planning that I was there presented to you on the V2 of the draft audit plan. I think I am too optimistic with the too excitement of the new staff. So I thought, I will go back to talk to my staff again. I think maybe I'm too aggressive. I will, I will, I will, I will make adjustments to make sure that I don't, I don't over
You say, we, we need to, we need to keep you guys sane. But we don't want to get you all, you know, under another, under a lot of pressure where, you know, you just are gonna feel like you're never catching up. And and especially under these conditions, I know as less as teachers, we feel that that pressure every time that we just need to keep going, because, you know, if we, if we fall, it's just gonna go down, you know, so. You just need to be realistic about what is it that you plan to do for 2021.
Thank you for your encouragement. I, I, I need to, to learn from you all is to be more more, more considerate, not to, not to burn down my staff, yes.
All right, that's all I had. Anybody else have anything else? If not, we thank you, Michelle Payne, for your presentation. And we look forward to what you're going to give us for the 2021 in your plan. Thank you.
I will. Thank you.
I think that completes our presentations for tonight. We will now consider the consent agenda. And I would like to read every item, and they're not that many in the consent agenda. So going back to number one, if you have any comments or anything that you'd like to state, please do so. We're here to work together and try to understand what all these are, things that are placed before us and understand them well. All right, minutes, Board of Trustees, Board Workshop, by video conference, November 9, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Minutes, let's see, Board of Trustees Board Meeting by Video Conference, November 10, 2026 PM. Okay, number three, the monthly financial update for October 2020. The number four, the solicitation number 221003 RFP, State Property Value Appeal Service. Number five, the interlock agreement with the County of El Paso regarding matching funds.
Chris?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I just had a question on that one. Is that, is that CARES money or is that a different? Uh, I just had a question on that one. Is that, is that cares money or is that a different, uh, a different pot of money?
I don't think my camera will come on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it is a pot of money that's related to cares. Um, the county received some money and they are going to contribute part of our local match that's required for the technology grant we're pursuing to offset some of our costs for operation connectivity through, throughout the county.
Okay. Was there any other, uh, funds to be had, uh, from the county in this, in this particular fashion?
Um, they probably did get other monies and I don't know if Susan's on here. She helped with this grant agreement, but, um, we, they were pretty generous. We had to work to get this. I don't think they made it available to all of the school districts.
Okay, let's, okay, thank you very much.
That's good to know. All right. So that's all the consent items. Uh, we will now consent, uh, consider the consent agenda using only one vote. Are there any other questions or discussions regarding the consent agenda? No discussion or any other questions? May I have a motion on the consent agenda is listed on this posted agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
A second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Lucero, seconds. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Hold on, you.
You're on, sir.
You're on.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Woodrow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Haggerty, how do you?
Yes.
Thank you. And I, Trustee O'Chavo, yes. Results are seven in favor. Thank you so much. So now go to the action items. Action item number one, the twenty twenty-one calendar year internal audit plan has been pulled for a future meeting. Action item number two, for five-star innovation G T completion beyond the classroom. Is there any discussion? Ms. Lucero?
I think so that it was first.
Oh, okay. Give me straight, Mr. So, Mr. Ramirez.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, Ken, I know that, uh, we sent something out, but can, can we just talk about this initiative? And, and why it's being done this particular way and, and, uh, just so that, uh, our, our district and community is aware of this, please.
Hi there. Good evening, board members, President, Dr. De La Torre. Um, you had some specific questions about Five Star?
Yeah, tell us about the initiative and tell us about, uh, the selection process and, and, uh, that sort of thing.
So this year being a unique year because of COVID, um, we can't have our usual G T showcase. If you all recall, that's one of two that we have downstairs with all of our G T students that come and produce their showcases. We have several competitions that occur within the campus level and then, uh, the P L C level. And then they come down to the district and showcase all of their assignments and have this superintendent's award. Because of COVID, we're not able to gather in large group settings that way. So we sought, um, other opportunities to meet our G T requirements specifically for our fourth through sixth graders. Um, we did seek Adventures in Learning, who is usually the vendor that we use, um, for these kinds of events. Um, and we've used them in the past, uh, to support our G T instruction. And they, um, were very honest and open with us. We met with them back in September, um, that they needed to charge us somewhere around two hundred to three hundred dollars per student because of COVID and because of their financial situation to be able to provide, um, the materials. In addition to that price tag, we had to create the professional development for them. So not only could we not afford their materials, we couldn't afford the timeline to get everything done to be able to meet our criteria that are part of the G T. Um, uh, uh, plan that we have from, uh, that expires next year, for twenty twenty-one is our five-year plan that we have. So we were able, we've, we've, um, had services through, uh, Five Star before, Five Star Innovation, um, through Mr. Haggerty, um, when he wasn't a board member with us and he's, he's been a judge, um, and he's provided some, uh, professional development as well. And so this was a great opportunity. We met as a committee, uh, the elementary and the middle school committee members met and, um, went through the services that were able to be provided. In addition to the P D, in addition to being able to give every single student the materials that they would need to compete within the three levels, the campus level, the learning community level, and then the superintendent's cup and be able to complete that in a virtual setting and thus be able to create those parades to be able to give them all of the materials with an extremely reasonable price and one that fits within our G T guidelines that we want to be able to support these students.
Um, as a follow-up to that, you, um, the materials are already been developed and you've already reviewed those?
Yes, sir. Um, I specifically have not, but we've had our two G T coordinators, Michelle Newbert from, um, elementary team and Michelle Contreras from the middle school team as well.
Okay, very good. Um, I'd just like to make a comment on that and then I may come back and make a comment after Ms. Lucero gets done. The, uh, the G T showcase, for those of you that never had the opportunity to, to attend, is just amazing, amazing events and, and, uh, uh, our students are so excited, our teachers are excited, there's so much energy and, and, um, it's just, it's just beyond comprehension, the energy and, and the excitement and they can see the future. And so, um, I, I really love that. There's still one little boy that has taken apart most of the appliances in his mom's home that, uh, I don't know if she'll ever forgive him for that, but, uh, and then the superintendent's cup, which is just, and again, another amazing, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, literally hundreds of kids, you know, uh, and their, their parents and their teachers. And again, the energy is just amazing. And, and so, um, I, I, I don't know. I just, these are really, really great events and I'm sorry that our students are gonna have, are not gonna have the opportunity, but I'm glad to see that there's something, uh, in place for them and, and give them the opportunity for just to participate in some type of event. So, uh, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Ms. Lucero?
Um, I wanted to first thank, um, Dr. Torre for bringing this item as an agenda item. I know that we have an extensive amount of, um, of attitude as far as contracts. So I, I appreciate the transparency. Um, from what I hear, it, from both Ms. Um, Luisa Baeza and, and trustee Ramirez, it, it sounds like it's an amazing, um, program and it, it's going to, uh, at least during this times of COVID, there, there is some type of way to be able to provide it. My, my only concern and, and, and this is something that I, I think that we really need to consider as an overall policy is that I, I just don't believe, I, I don't feel comfortable. And I guess I would like to know the, the amount. Um, I don't believe that it's good policy for board members to receive compensation while being an active board member. That, that does, that does bring, um, a concern. I, I don't, I, I understand that part of that is going to materials. I just, I, that part I do feel uncomfortable with. Is there any? I know it's legal. I did speak with Safi and I understand that it's legal, but I just, I don't know just because it's legal if it makes it ethically right. So I, I would like to know is, is what amount of that is going towards compensation for Mr. Haggerty?
I believe Susan or Lindley will be able to answer that better than I.
So as I mentioned in the B C that we drafted for the board, I am not privy to what a contractor breakdown is in terms of the materials and their profit and things like that. We aren't on most contracts. I think we had one quote that indicated, um, the personal training piece of this that, um, was the cost was around forty-two hundred and fifty dollars or something like that. But again, I can't speak to that. I don't have the breakdown of the contract and I'm not necessarily entitled to that when I'm dealing with a vendor.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Rosales?
Uh, just to do a piggyback on, um, Ms. Lucero, um, you know, in these times and even before and here thereafter, um, what we do as far as board members and being involved with things such as this, you know, perception to the public is reality. And I, I feel that we, we need to be real, real true to ourselves if there's any perceptively, um, any display of, of, um, of wrongdoing, because I know that you've already been checked and it's legal. But again, I go back to the, to the fact that often we're, we're, we're dealing with, with a situation that we all know where we're at. And, and, and so times are difficult, times are different. But I'd, I'd be real careful of, um, of, of pursuing uh, anything that, that seems like one of our board members is, is gaining, even though we know that it's not the case, but we've got to, we got to, I guess, frame it in such a way where if, uh, present as much transparency to the public because ultimately we are responsible to the people that put us here. Thank you.
Mr. Rosales, any other questions? I have a question. Uh, I know that Mr. Haggerty just came on board recently, but I know that he has provided services. Is that true? To his lead up before, as, uh, as a contractor before he became a board member?
Yes, he has been, uh, very involved, uh, with, uh, our school district for the last two years. Uh, and to Shane's credit, uh, he knew that, uh, that the sum of this contract, uh, did not require a board action. Uh, and he insisted, uh, that, uh, it come before the board and that he come forward uh, in full transparency with, and be candid about, uh, what he's prepared to offer, uh, our students, uh, who in many ways have been, um, deprived of what, uh, Mr. Ramirez just described. Uh, and we are, uh, required by law to, uh, adhere to our G T plan and provide these gifted and talented students with, uh, experiences with this. Uh, I would tell you, if the contract amount, um, isn't just within the range of what we've experienced in the past, i- it's on the lower end of what we typically invest, uh, to make these events happen for our students. So I don't know, um, what the breakout is. Uh, if Shane, uh, would like to, he can speak, uh, if, if he'd like to do that, just to bring clarity to some of your questions.
Thank you. Um, when it comes to materials, I think I'm spending about the same cost as one student per team for materials for the rest of it. Um, certainly I'm not gonna be able to pull this off on my own, but, um, probably my own investment, there'll be three segments. We putting in about two hundred hours each segment for lesson plans, training videos, history videos, teacher videos, documentation creation, scoring platforms, equipment preparation, uh, soldering the pieces, testing, and then that does maybe include the days of the events. That's just all prep work to putting on a, a competition like this. And then certainly once we start the, uh, the competition itself, there'll be, um, monitoring, there'll be, troubleshooting, help desk, conflict resolution, facilitation, we'll need judges. And then ongoing G T coordinator support from January on all the way through May. So the time investment is, is pretty substantial.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was, there you go. I see.
Yeah. So I was just wondering because it sounds like we're actually getting a very, very good deal here. Uh, does it sound like this is, uh, something that's going to make, um, make anybody rich and that a lot of extra time and the things that most teachers do have to do, uh, you know, extra work will be included in this that there, that he's not really getting paid for. But to make sure that this is something that we can, um, show our public, is there some way that we can put this out in some sort of documentation where that, that, um, that people could go to a website, I don't, go to someplace and look at the numbers and see the, see the, um, see the, you know, see what he's actually providing for us and, uh, all of that. And that might answer some of the, the concerns of some of the other trustees. Do we have any way of doing something like that or is it legal or anyway?
Go ahead, Ms. Austin.
Thank you, President Ochoa. Um, the, there is backup material in, for this item in the board book. So that provides a breakdown. Um, so the public can see what the, it, it doesn't break down the cost, but it does extensively list all the services that are being provided.
So would there be some way that we could, uh, point, um, point people to that? Because, uh, Joe Q public is not gonna know, okay, I can look in the board book and find out these kinds of things. Is there some way that we can, um, point them to that, you know, to that if they would like to look it up?
Um, perhaps one place that we could do it, we could, we could perhaps include something on the disclosures, the board disclosures. So perhaps, um, in connection with, with the disclosure that trustee Haggerty has filed with this, perhaps we could attach the document to that. But, but clearly if someone, I, I mean, I think, I think it is, has been made public. That's a second place that it could be made public, but it's certainly, um, I, I don't know of a better place to do it.
It's that essentially we're talking about an amount, not more than, not to exceed forty thousand, if I'm correct, right, Lindley? I think that was the number. We discussed the number in the backup. And if even, it's, again, I, 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 I heard and understood everything that was said by Dr. La Torre and, and, and others. But if, if we really look at it in a broad perspective and, and, and continuing, um, piggybacking is, as um, Mr. Rosales said, and on what he said, it, it, forty thousand equates to the public as a salary. And I have, I have a deep concern with that. That, that's almost what a, what a city council member makes. So it, I think we, we also, if we were to look at it, what if each and every one of us had a service that only we could provide and we're board members? And we each apply for a forty thousand dollar type of service. I'm just not comfortable with receiving compensation as board members. Is there, is there any other way to, to have Mr. Haggerty provide this as a volunteer that we already are, that he already is? I, I don't know. I, I don't have the answers for that, but I just, I, I really am concerned about that part of it. That's, that's where I'm at with that.
Um, Mr. Haggerty, does, do you have any partners in this that, 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 that would be helping you on this, with this? Oh, of course. Um, former students from, from Parkland and, uh, a, a couple of folks that have helped me out before with the different competitions that we do. And they would be compensated, correct? Yes, yeah, definitely. Ms., Ms. Austin? And, and I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Austin, but don't we have to, as, as trustees have to turn in? I, I can't remember the name of it, but, uh, uh, you know, an affidavit saying what, what we, uh, what, uh, we made or if we, there's anything that we have, you know, done is, 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 you know the name of that?
Yes, there, there are certain disclosures and, and they have been filed.
And that's, and that's public, correct? That we, anybody can get on there?
Yes, so let me just clarify. We don't have to disclose, a, a trustee doesn't have to disclose how much compensation. Yes, so let me just clarify, we don't have to disclose, a, a trustee doesn't have to disclose how much compensation they got. They just have to disclose the relationship if the compensation exceeds a certain minimal threshold. So it's not something that is constantly updated with how much a trustee gets paid.
Okay, all right. Mr. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosales.
Um, just to clarify in, in my mind, uh, Dr. uh, Dr. La Torre or um, Lindley. Or whoever can give me the answer, the, 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 the services provided. By Mr. Hagerty in this project are, are less than we would pay a, 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 a different company, XYZ company. Is this correct? In other words, we're, we're getting quite a bargain by, by the involvement of Mr. Hagerty. Is that correct?
Yes, we believe so, and furthermore, Mr. Hagerty went through the same procurement process. That any vendor would go through with an evaluation committee who reviewed the scope of work. And the scope of work should outline all of the things that trustee Hagerty just listed as um. What would be required to make this a, a successful program. Uh, but Mr. Hagerty, just like any other vendor, once we enter into the contract. Is not required to provide us with uh, sort of a day to day uh, record of who's being compensated. Uh, the only thing that uh, we will do is we will monitor. All of the professional development, the training, the services, because we're basically, what we're agreeing to is the service. And we would do that uh, for anyone, including Mr. Hagerty. So if you see Mr. Hagerty just as another vendor, he is being treated exactly in the same way that we would treat any other vendor.
I guess that, 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 uh, that helps me with my point that I was trying to make. We have, we have taken the, this project and reviewed it, we've discussed it. We understand the perimeters, some of us may be feel comfortable, some of us may not. But the fact is that if anyone out in the public says, well, you did this and did that, no, we can go ahead, like Ms. Austin said, you can, we can refer them. To that, the, the reference that you made, Ms. Austin. Um, I, I, it, the, the, the hard part for me is again, and it's been mentioned before. The, the connection between a board member and so on and so forth, but um, we gotta move on the same, in my, from my opinion. So I, I, as long as we are transparent to the public, I'm, I'm, I'm all right with it. And he's gone through all the, the sequels of, of, of reviews or scrutiny or whatever we do with any other vendor. Then we, we, we've done our due diligence, if you will. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, you are.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir, I, I can appreciate the concerns that have been expressed and, and uh, but I'm just gonna say just one more thing and um, is that. You know, Shane is not only providing the service, but uh, he's got a real passion for this. He deeply cares about it and, and uh. Like I said, I went to the superintendent's cup last year. Uh, he put my son and I to work being judges. When we, we would decide just, just gonna show up and, and uh, and look around and, and shake hands and stuff and he put me to work and so. And he cares deeply about this and it's not only what he's done at Eastwood Middle, but over at Fort Bliss and, and, and other places around town, so. Um, I, I'm, I'm confident that this is not a, a fly by night or that nonsense, it's that, that this is truly a, a passion of his and, and uh. And deserving of, of our consideration. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna chime in on this. Um, I know Mr. Hagerty. Even before he came on the board, I, I knew him when he was on the other board, but now, when he was just a, a. A gentleman that was working certain programs that I as a CTE teacher was very interested. We got to witness that in, where was it, in Austin or a cybersecurity where you had all these colleges working? Uh, to uh, towards a, a goal and a problem. You were there, Mr. Hagerty, and we talked about a lot of the programs that you were involved with. So it's not only this one, but you're, you're, you have multiple programs that you are supporting and you have been recognized for that. Um, I personally would have liked to have this kindness of uh, of uh, service. And for my own use in my CTE programs, because as uh, we are online, it's very hard to get. Anything to the students so they can do hands on, is just very hard and. And there's so many limitations that it's just, it's just hard. So I appreciate that we, as a sledder, are moving towards providing our GT students with these kind of services. And hopefully the competitions that they deserve so they can get fully recognized for their efforts. And um, I know that we have concerns about the transparency, but that has been fully stated upfront. Uh, of, everything has been checked off, all the I's have been dotted, all the T's have been crossed. And, and to be sure, I mean, that we are not doing anything that, that is uh. Could be considered illegal. It isn't, it isn't. It's something that's put to us, like I said, we all have different, we all have different careers before we came on the board. It just so happens that Mr. Hagerty has been providing this service to not only his letter, but I'm sure other districts. It's just one of those things that comes up, but um, that's all I have to say now. If there is any, any other cut, any other discussion. I'd like to move on this, please. All right, so if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir. President Ochoa, I'd like to make a motion to approve award for materials and services. For the twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one five star innovation GT competition. Beyond the classroom to Shane Hagerty and the amount of fifty five dollars per student registered to participate.
Second.
A second?
Mr. Rosales, seconds? Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes, sir.
Uh, trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
A.
What was it?
No.
No, okay. Trustee Hagerty, oh, I'm, trustee Hagerty, you're.
I abstain.
You're abstained, okay. And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yes. The results are in, six in favor, one abstention.
One opposed.
Okay, now on to the next agenda item.
President Ochoa? I believe it's a five, yes, one, no.
And then one. Yes, you're correct, thank you. Five in favor, one no, and one abstention. Thank you. I have no excuses, though. All right. Agenda item number three, approval of award of phase two solicitation number bond. Two, twenty nineteen RFP dash zero three BP one nine zero six, New Orleans Elementary Schools. Dolphin Terrace, Riverside, and Scottsdale. Is there any discussion? No further discussion, may I have a motion?
Move to approve. Go ahead, Shane, go ahead. Thank you. I, I moved to approve.
A second?
Eight.
You need to read the motion.
Yes, can we, can we have the motion read, please, Mr. Hagerty?
Looking.
Sorry, found it. I moved to approve award of phase two solicitation bond twenty nineteen RFP zero three. BP nineteen oh six, New Elementary Schools, Dolphin Terrace, Riverside, and Scottsdale.
Second?
There's more to it.
From bond funds.
Oh, there's a little one, sorry. Uh, for forty three million, six hundred twenty seven thousand, two hundred forty two dollars to Bain's general contractor. For bond funds towards the guaranteed maximum price. With the remaining packages totaling the guaranteed maximum price and estimated cost of construction presented at subsequent board meetings. Contingent upon final negotiation of contract documents and legal counsel review.
Second, again.
Mr. Rosales, do you second?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yes, results are in, seven in favor, none opposed. All right, agenda item number four. Uh, award of phase two solicitation bond twenty nineteen RFP dash zero two BP one nine zero five, Hank Smith School. Is there any discussion? I, I think this is a good one, in this community. If there's none, further discussion, I'd like to make the motion. I rec, uh, approve award of phase two solicitation. A bond twenty nineteen RFP dash zero two BP. One nine zero five Hank Smith School with Buford Thompson Company. Were not to exceed the amount of forty five million, eight hundred and seventy eight thousand, three hundred and ninety nine dollars. From funds towards the guaranteed maximum price contingent upon, upon final negotiations for contract documents and legal counsel review. May I have a second?
Second.
This Woodruff, seconds? Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, yes, thank you so much, seven in favor, none opposed. All right, action item number five. Award of phase three solicitation bond twenty nineteen RFP dash zero one. BP one nine zero four, Bel Air High School additions and renovations, is there any discussion? Hey, no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Woodruff?
I move to approve award of phase number three solicitation number bond twenty nineteen. RFP zero one BP one nine zero four, Bel Air High School additions and renovations. For one million, seven hundred seventy six thousand, six hundred and forty one. To Buford Thompson Company LLC from bond funds towards the guaranteed maximum price. With the remaining package, packages totaling the guaranteed maximum price. And estimated cost of construction presented at subsequent board meetings contingent upon final negotiation. Of contract documents and legal counsel review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Hey, uh, I think there was two of you, Mr. Rosales and somebody else. All right, second. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yep.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee, trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
And trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are in, seven in favor, none opposed. Okay, we come to the last part, but before we do that, I just wanna thank everybody for their support and their. And their uh, dedication to making this year what it has been. It has been difficult. We, we've gone through a lot of difficult situations, a lot of, it's, but we are here and we're all been together. So, in our students, our teachers, and our parents, of course, trying to take care of ourselves in the long run, so. If anybody else has anything to say, uh, not. Oh, I hear somebody. Oh, okay. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody, too. Bye bye, thank you.